...Director of Planning, who wants to address the agenda, so we'll hear from you, please. Ian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With reference to item 7.11 in tonight's agenda, covering the Planning and Land Use Committee Recommendation regarding the rezoning application for 3320 Machosen Road and 3319 Painter Road, staff have identified an administrative error that has resulted in the draft minutes and resolution coming from the Planning and Land Use Committee for that item to be in error, and I respectfully request that council consider sending this item back to staff to have that correction made. Thank you.
So, that would mean taking it from our agenda this evening and putting it forward to the next meeting. So, with your assent on that, we'll remove it from the agenda? Thank you. And that's the only change to the agenda, the removal of that one item, so looking for adoption of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Public participation time, this is when you folks in the audience can address council, and the microphone is on, please state your name and your address, and we'd love to hear from you, so. Oh, somebody's gotta be first.
Not a politician, but obviously most of us here about the planner wanted to defer, so do you get to speak on it later, or?
It will not be discussed tonight in the meeting, so if you want to, you know, leave your comments now, that's fine, or else you can save them for the next council meeting.
Are they gonna be?
Or submit them before then.
Are they gonna be listened to, or will they make any difference whatsoever? Not that they have in the past, but will they be entertained or concerned, or?
We don't know unless we hear them, and, you know, this is all a process in, and there is also opportunity should the development get to a public hearing stage where all of that information is collected, most certainly.
Okay, so would it be to our best interest to wait, in your opinion?
Well, it's gonna give you a bit more time to think about what your concerns are and be able to articulate them, so, you know, or you can speak now, it's up to you.
I don't need more time. Well, we're quite concerned, so that's obviously why we're here. We came to the last meeting, and honestly and truthfully, I was not impressed whatsoever with the planning committee, I thought it was gonna be the council, but...
Could we get your name and?
My name is Don Duncan, and I live in 3341 Roberlac Road.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
And I have been there for forty-five years. And I think the thing that pissed me, pardon me, the thing that annoyed me most was the attitude of some of your council members that were on the planning committee. One of the closing remarks was, "The day of single-family dwelling will go the way of the boat Dodo Bird." Why did we buy out here? We bought out here because the lots were bigger, we had single-family dwellings, we raised our kids out here, and we had room. Now apparently, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the new vision of this council is high-density. None of us were aware of that. None of us wanted, and the majority of us have voted for you council. And if this is the vision, we would certainly like to know that is your vision, because it is not ours. And where did it come from? I don't know. I fault myself for not coming to as many council meetings as I should have, as obviously we have to come to listen and learn what the council is projecting and conveying. Where does this vision come from? I do not know. The other reference that upsets me was they kept quoting Langford. With this development, they said, "Langford did this and Langford did that." Excuse me, we are not living in Langford, we are in Colwood. If we wanted to live in Langford, we would have lived in Langford. We live in Colwood. Langford, with their vision, yes, they got money coming in left, right, and center, but my research has shown that their crime rate is up to thirty percent. Colwood's is only eighteen percent. Is this your vision, to be like Langford? Yes, you get money coming in with big box stores and everything else, but is that where we want to go? Over to you guys. The planning committee said, they assured us they're gonna recommend that there would be no suites with this development. Fine, I'm happy with that, except suites are another issue. We had a flop house, a rental place, that had rented out the bedrooms. We came to your bylaw officers, and the bylaw officers told us, "We have no control over what happens to renting out houses. If they rent out bedrooms, fine." Okay? I had nine vehicles parked in my yard, around my yard, and everything else. My concern is if you bring in the wrong type of people with high-density, these are the issues that we're gonna deal with. People can rent out their bedrooms, and they can have all sorts of people coming in. Bylaw can't control that, because it's not in our bylaws, and I don't know. Anyway. I've walked the neighborhood today, as a matter of fact, I walked the neighborhood, I got up early and walked it. Every house has two vehicles, and the majority have got a dead car in it, and boats. When you put a high-density thing like that with a limited amount of parking, where are the people gonna park? They're not gonna park, and they have few antiquated parking spots that are dedicated with the plans that I have seen. I don't know. Over to the council. So, development is gonna force people parking on the streets. Myself, I look after the front of my park, I think, I put gravel down, I look after, there's no weeds and everything else. It really annoys me if somebody else parks there that isn't a friend, or one of my neighbors that usually is respectful of my property, which I know it's not my property, it belongs to the city of Colwood, but it really ticks me when they park there. Tipton is gonna be a parking lot for this complex, unless somebody deems it necessary to have residential parking only. I don't think that's gonna happen, because the other day, I came here and spoke about the traffic on Owens, Tipton, and Carson. All the traffic comes as it is now, because there's no light on Painter. The city engineer, I apologize because I don't have good hearing, I don't know whether he supported that observation or not, because I didn't hear him clearly. But my interpretation of what he said, they were concerned about all the traffic and everything coming from the new gravel pit development, and they didn't want to impede the flow coming down Machosen. Therefore, I have the impression, maybe I'm wrong, but they didn't want to put a light there, which means to me, in my little simple mind, that everything from this mega-complex would be going down Tipton or Owens. We have enough traffic as it is. It's like a raceway. We have schools in this area, and it's just at eight o'clock in the morning, and I can assure you, ma'am, it is not a pretty place to walk at eight o'clock in the morning. Mostly, it's ladies running late, they're taking their kids to school, because there is so much traffic, they don't deem it necessary or safe to take their kids, so they use Owens or Tipton. That is one of my big concerns as well. I'm not against development, I think the development should be smaller, tasteful, and more in tune with the Colwood, Colwood that we bought out here to be part of. The other question that wasn't addressed, and I have no answer this whatsoever, I worked for twenty years with the CRD, good, bad, or indifferent, let's not go there, but however. The issue I have with this complex is sewage, nobody addressed that. I'm assuming, because it's a big complex, they'll have to hook in. What about the rest of the people? I have heard, since I've been walking around, talking to people, that they've applied to hook in to people that are needed right there at the access to the sewage, and they're not allowed to, because what they would like to do is maybe come with the Colwood's vision of density and hook in and develop their big pieces of property. To date, they have been denied. I really question where they're going. And my last thing, which I was working on but didn't get the time to complete, is I was in the military, and we worried about ingress and ingress and fire and everything else. The plans that we saw only had one entrance and one exit to that place. They're gonna put garbage pickups there, some of the dedicated parking spots, knowing what I know about people, they're gonna want containers and everything else, that's gonna take up some of the parking spots. Again, my question is, where are those people gonna park? How are they gonna get in and out? How are they gonna drive? And that's basically my concerns. I personally think, I appreciate what Colwood is trying to do, yes, we want to generate some revenue and everything else, but it is not my vision with that many people in that small of an area, and I think we have to put our ducks in a row and learn to walk before we start to run. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Lawrence Campbell, I live at 333 Ben Homer Drive. I have no problem with people parking in my road allowance, because I live across the street from the school. People come, my boys play lacrosse in that field, people come and say, "Do you mind if I park in front of your house?" I said, "It's road allowance, it's not my spot." You're welcome to it. I think, all the points, I haven't been following this in terms of development permit variations and covenants and all that, I'm just, there's a concept that's been missed here, I think. And I've been in construction, and as Mr. English will concur, I've been in construction in Victoria for forty-six years. I'm not here to pander to my neighbors, and I'm not here to bash developers. I believe what we're dealing with here is that for however many years, moms and dads unloading their kids, including us, for Dunsmere and Sangster School, we're able to do it off the roadway, because of that church. Guess what? It's gone now. For the next ten years or longer, a third of the traffic on that road will be low beds with excavators, gravel trucks, concrete mixers, drains, for a really, really long time. A loaded gravel truck weighs sixty thousand pounds, and at thirty kilometers an hour, takes eighty feet to stop. You're gonna have six-foot-long parking spaces on Machosen Road, and guess what? And how are you gonna do that with a bus stop, a fire hydrant, and a crosswalk, all in those parking spaces? People are gonna back into those spots. That's what you do when you've got a bigger vehicle in a smaller space, you back in. Right behind them's gonna be that sixty thousand pounds. People need to be able to load and unload their kids for these schools off the roadway. The fact that this church, the fact that something unspeakable hasn't happened there already is because these people have been able to unload their kids on private property. That's gone now. That does not relieve Colwood's responsibility to guarantee life safety for these kids and their parents. This, what we're talking about here shouldn't even be happening. We gotta get, you gotta be able to see in six directions at once, no matter where you go here, around those schools. It's, you gotta get, you gotta have a place where people can unload their kids safely. The nature of the traffic that's gonna be happening here isn't like Lakewood School or Millstream School, or anything, that's all done up there, the riprap and the boulder walls and the lock blocks are all done, outside those schools. This is gonna be a deadly place for the next ten years, without that property. Colwood needs to maintain life safety for those kids and their parents. What I believe that Colwood, if Mr. English and his partner haven't already bought this, Colwood should buy it, and if they've already bought it, they should work a deal with these guys, or appropriate it, but if, Colwood should be buying this property, and they should be putting the kids first, the parking spaces first, fill the awkward corners with some grass and some benches, but do something proactive to keep these kids alive, because that church is all that's been keeping them alive all these years, and now it's gone. Buy it back. Thank you.
Hello. My name is John Vincer, from 3340 Painter Road. I listened to the Land Use Committee last couple times, and was understanding, you know, their reading of the official community plan, so I went on there myself. The main page on the official community plan describes land use, and I just wanna read this out as a reminder to everyone in the audience and everyone in the room here. Actual use is a balance between developer's plan, preference of the neighborhood, and housing types. So as we go forward with this, I know there has been a lot of talk about preference of the neighbors and the type of houses, will be more on this later. I'd like to send an email to the most effective person, is that, would that be the Land Use Committee, the mayor, about policies in the OCP and understandings or interpretations by the Land Use Committee?
Director of Planning.
Director of Planning? Thanks very much. I just wanted to point that out, I was glad to read that on the main page, and there'll be more to follow. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Hi, I'm just here, I understand that it's been postponed till, I believe, the next Planning and Use?
No, next council meeting?
Next council meeting, is that next Monday?
No, two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now, okay. I picked up this lovely colored brochure this afternoon, or this morning, when I visited the lovely city hall, and on here, it shows the property in question, and it shows still the community garden. Why are we not providing this, maintaining this as a pickup drop-off for the students of Sangster, and putting it back as the community garden that serves the community in which we live? People could rent lots, plots, we could make it a fabulous place for everybody, the school could have a growing and learning center that was affiliated with that. The property is a special circumstance, because it's in the middle of three schools, two elementary schools, one middle school, the students will be younger going to the middle school next year. Mr. Logan said, "Well, my children will ride to school." Well, they go to Wishart on a paved crosswalk where there's buses or bike lanes. There's no bike lanes over at Favview, Tipton, Owen, Ben Homer. It's gonna take somebody getting hit by a car or something like that for somebody to take notice. It's a special circumstance, this needs to be a special piece of property, and not, it needs to be an exception, not put in to the official community plan because of the situation where it is. It shows people walking on your lovely little map, it shows a place of worship still, which is no longer in session, but it shows still on your thing that I got today, the community garden. So I'm asking the community, the council, to put it back in the community, buy it back from these guys, and make it a happy place for everybody to enjoy, for the safety of the students and the pedestrians that we serve. Thank you.
Could I get your name, please, before you?
Catherine Robertson, 395 Favview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keeping an eye on the time, anyone else, folks? Seeing none, then I will move forward with our agenda. Thank you for those of us who expressed their words. Mayor's message, I do have a couple of announcements coming forward. They're all kind of in, forward into June, but just a reminder that it's ALS Awareness Month for the month of June, and so we'll be recognizing that when we get into June. Also, it's Accessibility Day on June the 6th, and there is a proclamation here that the city has usually followed through on, so I'll get that done. And following, in suit of the accessibility date, there is a picnic that everyone is welcome to, put on by IACTI. It will be held this year, Friday, June the 19th, at 6:15 till 8:15 at the Machosen Community House at 4430 Happy Valley Road. So it'll be outside in the farmer's market, for those of you who are familiar with the property out there. Beverages and barbecue items will be provided, bring your own lawn chairs, munchies, and dessert. It is a alcohol-free event, so it will be pop and water and that sort of thing. So dress casual, there'll be campfires allowed if the weather and things permit it. Friends and family, dress wheelchair accessible, accessible washrooms, and there is an RSVP, but we will have this posted on our website, so folks can make their intentions known to the organizers of that group. Anyone else from council with anything coming up?
Shamrock's Home Over, 22nd of March, by May.
Oh, yes. Yep. All right, just days away, folks, we'll be back in the green. Moving on to adoption of minutes of the special meeting of council on March the 23rd, and the regular meeting of council on April 27th?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Move receipt, please, for Cycling Advisory Committee on March the 2nd, Transportation and Public Infrastructure, March 18th, Planning and Land Use, April 7th, and Board of Variance, July 2nd, or 22nd of 2014.
Move receipt?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, pardon me, councillor Nalt?
Point of clarification on the Planning and Land Use Committee meetings of April 7th. There was a vote recorded for the Painter-Machosen development, I'm just looking for it now. There we go, it's on page nine of sixteen, and the vote is recorded as in favor, member Ron Cotray and Sean Eden, opposed councillor Cynthia Day, councillor Logan's name is not listed there. I was curious as to whether he voted in favor or opposed.
I voted in favor, as I did the last meeting.
Okay, that should be recorded on the minutes, then, as a correction?
So we can have a correction noted for that, please? Come on. Thank you.
Sorry, I just have one more.
Yep.
Sorry, and this is more of a question, just looking at our Director of Planning. Since we postponed, you mentioned that we were postponing the Painter Road discussion this evening because of an error in the minutes, is that correct? Or, so like, should we be adapting?
Uh, that was the last minute. No, the last minutes.
The last minutes. That haven't, we haven't adopted them. Okay.
And if I, just a point of clarification, councillor Nalt, that initial vote in the minutes that you mentioned, on page nine, okay, we'll fix whatever's incorrect there.
Thank you, it's rather vital, because if councillor Logan was opposed, it would have been a defeated motion.
That was just a point, wanting to know, to clarify. All clear on that, then, folks? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Presentations we have before us, too, we'll start with consolidated finance statements. Director of Finance, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this portion of the meeting is to present the City of Colwood's 2014 audited financial statements, and this is in accordance with the community charter, which requires that staff have prepared these statements, but they then must be reviewed by an independent auditor, and then submitted to the inspector of municipalities. The purpose, then, is to satisfy this requirement, which will allow us to send the statements to the inspector, and this year, we're very pleased to point out that we'll meet the deadline of May 15th. So, we will be having Corey Vanderhorst, who is a partner with our audit firm of M&amp;P, is here this evening, and he is going to be doing a PowerPoint, and I'm just looking to our deputy corporate officer to ensure that we're ready to go with the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you, so I will turn it over to Corey Vanderhorst. Thanks, Corey.
Thanks, Andrea. Hello, Madam Mayor, councillors. Thank you for having me here today. I will take you to the results of our audit of the City of Colwood's financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2014. I'm happy to answer questions as we go, or we can hold them to the end, either way is good for me. So I'll talk a little bit about the statements, go through some high-level, look at those, talk about our audit, our audit of the year, and end up with a little bit of financial analysis, diving deeper into the financial statements. So I wanted to clarify, at the start, that the statements are presented on what we call a consolidated basis. That means it's got all the activities of the City of Colwood as an independent organization, and it has a proportionate share of the West Shore Parks and Rec Society. So, Colwood's share is 22.76% of that organization. And I got brought into the numbers, so the numbers you will see include a portion of the assets of the Recreation Society, a portion of the revenues, a portion of the expenses. So starting with the statement of financial position, or the balance sheet of 2014, you can see the cash and investments of $17.9 million. I will explain a little later what's in that cash and investments. There is a total financial assets of $20.4 million, so that is cash, accounts receivable, some other minor liquid assets. The city has debt of $12.3 million, including some capital leases and some short-term debt, and total liabilities of... And total liabilities of $23.1 million as at the end of 2014. So if we take the total financial assets and subtract off the total liabilities, we get, what we're looking at is sort of a liquid position there, and so what we call it is net debt of $2.7 million. I would like to draw attention to that number is assuming the improvement from 2013. 2013 had a net debt of $5 million, it's now down to 2.7. So that is a good improvement to see there. Tangible capital assets represents the physical assets owned by the city, being infrastructure, road, water sewer, as well as buildings and equipment, vehicles. It's $136 million, fairly consistent year over year. And the accumulated surplus at the end of the year is $133,519,000. I will explain what's in that number in a future slide.
Can you, under total financial assets, can you, do we have an explanation of why we had a $2.2 million increase in our asset increase, or our total financial assets? And where that came from? And in addition, while you're looking that up, can you also tell me what the norm is for the net debt for our municipality is having a $2.7 million net debt? Good, bad, indifferent?
I'll answer the first question, the increase you're seeing there in the total financial assets is mainly an increase in the cash account.
Okay.
Going from 15.3 to 17.9. There are some other changes there in receivable accounts, that's the main impact. I will get into the full analysis of the cash flows of the city, and I'll sort of let you see where that increase in cash is coming from. And the second question with respect to net debt. The communities that I work with are generally flirting with the, or are in a net financial asset position. So that means that they have more cash and more receivables than the financial liabilities. But I do work with communities that have net debt. The biggest key thing that I discuss with those communities is, it's really about the trend in what you're doing with that net debt, right? Where if you're increasing that net debt position, you're gonna run into sustainability problems. You're gonna run into debt caps, and your ability to, your ability to tax is limited in terms of raising tax rates, and your ability to debt can become hindered. So we tend to focus more on what are you doing to get the debt down, being paid down on schedule? And what is it doing, and you can see year over year, a significant decline in that debt position. We'll move next to the Statement of Operations, or more commonly known as the Income Statement. And there we'll look at the total revenue at the city is $19.4 million. See, that's down just a little bit from 2013 of 19.7, but under budget of $20.9 million on the revenue side. On the expenses, there's $18.5 million of expenses for the year. 2013 had 17.7, so there was an increase there. And budgeted expenses were 18.2 million. So when we subtract the revenue, subtracting expenses from the revenue, we get our annual surplus number of $666,757. And you note there in the little asterisk I added, and this is according to the accounting standards. So this is not a cash surplus figure. This has got accounting adjustments for non-cash items, estimates. It's also got things like amortization of capital assets in it. So we'll look at the cash in a couple of slides, I believe. To dive a little bit further into that Statement of Operations, what you could see there year over year was a decrease in the annual surplus of $1.3 million. So what happened, or what's driving that there is when we look at the revenues, there was an increase in tax revenue, as was expected based on what you said in the tax rates in the budget last year. There was an increase in investment earnings. So the investments are in proper accounts earning interest and not sitting in cash accounts and not earning good interest there. And some developer contributions, more developer contributions in 2014. But to offset that, because we do see a decrease in revenue, there's a decrease in user fees and a decrease in government transfers. So the government transfers being the grants and the one-time bits of money that come in, and those are really dependent on the level of projects, capital projects and other things that you're doing. So year over year, revenue decreased $304,000. Looking then at the expenses, the main increases in expenses are in protective services, police services and fire services. Engineering and transportation, which is where you see roads and other engineering costs coming into play. And Recreation Parks and Culture, which is in the city's share of West Shore Parks and Rec, as well as any other operations that it handles for itself. So there's a year-over-year increase in expenses of $798,000. When we add the $304,000 decrease in revenue to the $798,000 increase in expenses, as well as a change in the West Shore share, so I remember, I mentioned that we're consolidating an amount in, so there's an accounting adjustment there of $287,000. That generates your $1.3 million decrease in annual surplus. Yeah, so what you're doing is, you're picking up a percentage share, I think it was 22 or 23%, and every year that percentage share changes a little bit. I'm not sure if it's based on population? Yeah, population of the member communities. So when that percentage changes even by a small amount, because West Shore Parks and Rec is a very significant operation there, we end up having to book that little change in the percentage of the population. And it, because we've got to balance the financial statements, we have to put this amount in. So instead of showing it in Parks and Recreation expenses, we're showing it separately to isolate it as not an actual transaction of the city as operations and accounting numbers. Shortest answer.
Yeah, it does, but it doesn't.
In that, can I, I need clarification, because our budget increase was less than 2% on West Shore Park and Rec. And that would, that number would suggest that our population grew significantly larger than Langford's population grew. If we had a $287,000 increase. So I guess I'm trying to understand where, how we're getting that significant a dollar amount change.
This is completely independent of budget. This is the city recognizing our ownership share of West Shore, ultimately of their assets, in the financial statements. It's nothing to do with the budgeted requisition. So our percentage share dropped slightly, so we had to recognize overall a decrease.
So is that a negative or is that a positive?
That's a loss.
That's a loss, okay.
That we have to recognize.
I was thinking of including it as a capital loss person, that net cash budget increase.
It's an accounting transaction, this is a non-cash transaction.
That's right, your actual budgeted expense line for West Shore Parks and Rec would actually be partially eliminated in the process, so it kind of gets buried in that Recreation Parks and Culture expense line item. And yes, as every director mentioned, this is an accounting adjustment. So the next few slides are gonna look at the revenues, and then we'll start with the revenues, then we'll look at the expenses, and have a look at what makes up the revenues in the city. So you can see the largest revenue item there being the taxes, followed by user charges, and a very steep decline to any of the other revenue sources at the city. When we look at expenses and where the expenses are hitting, you can see the largest expense consistently is Protective Services, followed by the Engineering and Transportation. And then that blue line, just a little bit to the right there, is Recreation and Culture. And fourth on the expense list is General Government. That gives you an idea of the amount of spending and where it's being spent at the city. I promised I'd mention what happened with the cash, because we've been talking about a lot of accounting adjustments and things that accountants like to put into the statements. So the cash flow statement shows us that operations at the city brought in $4.6 million. Capital spent $876,000, so that's purchasing physical assets, capital projects. Financing brought in $1.2 million. So there's a net cash, sorry, financing used $1.2 million, I should say. That's paying down debt on schedule. And so there's a net cash inflow of $2.5 million, as was asked about earlier. And that shows sort of where it's coming from. I promised I'd tell you what's in that $17.9 million, or sort of what it's earmarked for. So in the bank and investment accounts, we've got monies that are put aside for future projects. There's $4.6 million sitting in deferred revenue for future costs. Another $1.7 million in refundable deposits, so as projects go through, those will have to be paid back by the city. Reserves have $6.7 million set aside for future projects. And then I added in a line item as well for current payables. So the things that are gonna run through in 2015 is actually $3.1 million. So the net after all of that is $1.6 million of cash investments that isn't specifically earmarked for something within the next year or three to five years. So it does show you that, it looks like a large number, but there's a lot of it already spoken for. And then the accumulated surplus, that number of $133.5 million is primarily made up of what we call invested in capital assets. So that's the value of the physical assets on the books, less the associated debt. I mentioned there was $6.7 million in reserves, and the other accumulated surplus is $5.2 million. So that's your general surplus accounts in the other. That is my mic on. Actually, reserves. The reserves would be the $6.7. I will, there is a small amount of reserves and some West Shore amounts or equity in there, but I will defer to staff, there's $4.2 million that is listed on, in page, sorry, Note 8 of the statements as an other surplus item.
So year-over-year amounts that aren't specifically allocated to a statutory reserve ultimately end up, if they're not invested in your capital and you haven't earmarked them for your statutory reserves, it just ends up in your accumulated surplus.
My accumulated surplus?
You're, you're.
So are we talking cash? Are we talking, are we talking, are we talking asset or are we talking cash when we're talking about other?
You're talking about.
You're talking about overall, out of your accumulated surplus, the majority of that figure is directly invested in your capital assets.
Right, so again, I'm trying to figure out, is other liquid? Maybe I can phrase it that way, is this a liquid asset or is this a, like a hard asset?
The short answer is no, not a liquid asset, not entirely. It's not specifically earmarked like those reserves are, like it's not set up by, with buy low reserves and things like that, but it is there to be paying off future liabilities. And the things that I went through on one of those other slides. So no, I would not say it is sort of free and clear money.
To understand the liquidity of our assets, you really want to be looking at the Statement of Financial Position, which was what Corey went over just a few slides prior.
Well, and that's what I was referring back to. If I refer back to that second slide on cash and investments, total financial assets, blah, 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 where would I, where would I find that $5.2 million? Where, which category would that be listed in under?
It's in analyzing the change in the accumulated surplus figure for 2014 versus 2013.
But 2014, see, and I don't mean to be a pain here.
No, no, not at all.
But the, if you, if, could you, can we go back to slide three, please? Okay, good. So if you look, our accumulated surplus increased from 132 to 133. But you're showing me a 5.2 and a 1.8 million over year over year, just in that one category. And yet my entire surplus has only gone up less than a million, 800,000.
And if you look at Note 8 to the financial statements, which isn't in the PowerPoint slide, it's the note to the draft financial statements before you. The whole purpose of that note is to explain how the total surplus has changed, where the city has increased the investment in tangible capital assets, or in some years decreased the investment because of the amortization expense that's run. And then it shows the change in the balances of the city's statutory reserve funds. And so the purpose of Note 8 helps answer your question.
Then I will read Note 8. Feel comfortable with everything. Thank you, sorry, you can keep going.
Good, questions are good. Don't want to get too far though. Okay, so, and I think I've already mentioned this a bit in looking at what's in accumulated surplus. There's an invested in capital assets number of $122 million, what is the net book value of the assets, so the depreciated value of those assets, of $135 million, less the debt of $12 million. So it doesn't represent funds held, it represents physical assets. And then the reserves, which is the amount set of in set aside to buy low reserves for future projects. So I'm gonna move away from the financial statements now, though we can, I'm happy to come back to those if there's further questions, and talk a little bit about the audit and the audit process. So our audit is complete. We are happy to be providing what we call an unqualified opinion. Basically, that means, that's auditor speak for the clean audit opinion. We are prepared to sign our report. The process is, we are required to have council approve of the statements before I can hand over paperwork. And we're also completing a few minor standing items, such as confirming with lawyers that there's no other legal, there's no lawsuits or other contingencies or things floating around out there that we aren't aware of, and that the city is not already aware of. So our auditor responsibilities, we look at the controls that are in place at the city to make sure that transactions are being recorded appropriately, that risks are being mitigated, and control over assets is appropriate. We sample transactions throughout the year, but we do not look at every transaction to form our audit opinion. Again, our audit is complete, we are ready to sign our audit report. And our materiality number used in the audit was $300,000. So what that means is we tested every balance over that threshold of $300,000, and underneath that level, we sampled items to give ourselves comfort that the financial statements are materially accurate. During the audit, we discussed matters with Andrea, Jen, Carrie, and many other members of the city's staff. We'd like to thank them for their time and effort in helping us get the audit out on time. I will confirm that MMP is independent with respect to the City of Colwood as of today's date, May 11th. And what that means, we didn't do any other work or any other projects for the city that would impair our independence. And then I will cap off with a little bit of financial analysis. I'd like to kind of take the numbers out of the financial statements that you see in front of you, because they've got lots of accounting and things in them, and talk about some ratios and look at some trends and things that we've seen in the last few years with the city's financials. We'll start with sustainability, and what we're looking at here is the degree that the city can maintain its existing liabilities with respect to service claims to the public and paying down creditors and suppliers without increasing the debt or tax burden on the economy. So we start there by looking at assets to liabilities. And we're looking here for a ratio greater than one. We want to see more assets than liabilities. And for the city, this ratio has been consistently above six for the last five years. So more total assets than debt. Then we focus in on the financial assets. Again, this is talking about that net debt number that's been improving. We're again looking for something, we're looking for this ratio to be above one. The financial assets to liabilities at the city is below one, it's 0.88. And, but it has been showing steady improvement over the last five years. So it was 0.56 in 2010, it's now to 0.88, we're getting up closer to over that magic mark of one. So the ratio's been improving, but the city does. So, the ratio's been improving, but the city does remain in a net debt position with more financial liabilities at the end of 2014 than financial assets. The next area we look at is we take the net debt and we compare it to the total annual revenue. So, this is a rough measure of future revenue required to pay for past transactions. So, this ratio, again, steadily improving for the last five years. In 2010, ratio was at 62%, and it has improved to 14% in 2013. So, as we see the net debt decline, we see this number go down, which is what we want to see. We want to see it declining. And there's a similar trend if we focus in on the tax revenue compared to the net debt, as opposed to just the total overall revenue. So, that's, it was at 89% in 2010, and it's now down to 19%. So, significantly less of the revenue going to pay off the debt and paying for past transactions, and more of it available to pay for ongoing operations in the future. But until you get out of that net debt position, you are, there's a significant amount of revenue going towards that and liability repayments. Let me look at flexibility. So, the degree to which the city can change its debt or tax burden on the community to meet existing financial obligations. So, we look at public debt charges to revenue. We look at comparing the interest expense to the revenue that's being brought in. So, this measures the constraint on your current resources. How much interest are you paying down? So, this ratio has remained steady. It's been about two to three percent for the last few years. 2014 was actually 2.1%. And the last one we look at in flexibility is looking at the physical assets, tangible capital assets. What we do here is we take the carrying value or the depreciated value and compare it to the historic costs to get an idea, a rough idea of the age of the assets that the city owns. And we're looking here at that rough number that might tell us if you're keeping up with capital costs, or if things are getting older and older and you're having a struggle with keeping up with it. So, this ratio is about 73%. It's been slowly declining from 77% in 2010. So, that means there's declining value in some assets, and future costs of capital may be increasing at the city. Let me look at vulnerability. And here, we're looking at other government funding, so federal and provincial funding, and how much is coming into the city. So, this ratio often fluctuates depending on the types of capital projects you're doing, the type of infrastructure funding that comes out, various things going on at the federal level. 2013 and 2012 were at around 11%, and 2014 has dipped down to about 6.6%. So, yeah, high percentage years are when there's more capital funding coming in for capital projects, but we saw not a lot of capital spending last year, it was 800,000 or 900,000. So, that corresponds here to not as much government grant money coming into the city. Yes. I believe it does get recorded in the government grant revenues? Yes. Yes. Does that wind down? Less revenue coming in there? Yeah. That's my presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Question time for council. If there's any further questions that we haven't answered as we went?
Oh, I have questions.
There is a request within our memo here that council approve the 2014 consolidated financial statements, and that the acting chief administrative officer and acting director of finance be authorized to sign the 2014 consolidated financial statements. So, I'm guessing that we need that. So, council, if I could get a motion mover in a second, or please? Culture Day?
Ah, you are staying awake there, buddy.
Any further questions? Call the question then, all those in favor, posed, motion carried on that? Thanks, Corey. And thank you, our director, and Jen, and all of our hardworking staff who've been really, really, really burning the midnight oil on this. It, it really gives us, on behalf of council, gives us great pleasure to be on top of things and in time and with a report like this. So, thank you. Okay. At this time, we're on item 5.2, and we have a special presentation from Jackie Powell with the Mums Like Us organization. So, Jackie, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, yes, I am Jackie Powell, the founder of Mums Like Us, and we are a group of parents and caregivers of our adult children with a mental illness, and several join me this evening. In Greater Victoria, which includes Colwood, there are at least 10,000 people living with a severe and persistent mental illness. We parents here experience firsthand the gaps that exist in our city, Greater Victoria area, I should say, and it is necessary to have a high level of patience, perseverance, and communication skills to find out exactly what services are available. All too often, the service or program you've been waiting for turns out to be of no help at all. In explaining this dilemma to my neighbor over a year ago, he responded with, Jackie, I cannot understand why Clubhouse International is not here in the Greater Victoria area. He went on to explain how it has helped his brother in Winnipeg, and by helping his brother, it has helped a whole family. I learned that a key fact in Clubhouse International is that it is intentionally understaffed. That is because it is the members who are needed and wanted to get the purposeful and meaningful work done. Staff are trained to find each member's strengths, and this wonderful concept works. Fountain House, which was the original Clubhouse International that started out in 1948 in New York City, was the recent recipient of the Conrad Hilton Humanitarian Award of 1.5 million dollars. Now, that is the highest humanitarian award awarded in the world. Another recipient was Doctors Without Borders. That's several years ago now. One of the programs that, that we are so taken with, with Clubhouse is the transitional employment, which is a paid employment program unique to Clubhouse. A staff person is trained how to do a job, and in turn, that staff person then trains a member. It eliminates the need for interviews and resumes, which are often blank or have huge unexplainable gaps. This opens the door for return, self-esteem, and confidence. Meanwhile, skills are being learned and relationships built. There are 18 clubhouses across Canada, 322 worldwide. Several of us toured the Richmond Clubhouse one year ago, Pathways, and we could see immediately how this could help our children. Also, several of us last June attended the three-day Clubhouse Conference in Richmond and learned firsthand from many members how Clubhouse has helped them. It gave them a reason to wake up in the morning and in many cases, saved their lives. A recent study, an SROI, Societal Return on Investment, shows that for 14, $14 is saved for every dollar spent at the Pathways Clubhouse, so reduce leasing, for example. So, in summary, Clubhouse International helps fill the gaps and reduces the need for downstream services, such as hospitalizations. This is a proven model of rehabilitation. It is not reinventing the wheel. There are 36 international standards, and they're adhered. It doesn't matter if it's China, London, England, New York City, Russia. They're, it's like a Starbucks franchise. It's not reinventing the wheel. So, yeah, I think I said it's an upstream service to get people back into life. And so, we are here tonight to educate you, inform you, and help us with our endeavor to bring one to the Greater Victoria area. Before I pass this on to Ben for a very quick video, I'd like to announce, we have, our group has partnered with the Canadian Mental Health Association, and several clubhouses across Canada have made that partnership. And that just happened very recently, so we're very excited about this situation that just happened. And so, we're inviting you to join us. We'll all be there, the Mums Like Us group and the Canadian Mental Health Association for the Ride Don't Hide event, June 21st. And that Beacon Hill Park, is it Ben? Just one last thing before I sit down. We're having an event with the Canadian Mental Health Association, June 4th, at the University Club, and it's on our website, the invitation and details how to attend. And the members and staff from Pathways Clubhouse will be there, and they will give a better explanation than I've been in just this very short time. So, please come and invite your friends and neighbors to learn more about this wonderful program. Thank you very much.
The Clubhouse is my life's purpose.
Magnolia Clubhouse is a vital community of growth, hope, and opportunity for people who live with mental illness. The Clubhouse is located on Magnolia Drive in the heart of Cleveland's Cultural Centre, University Circle. Formerly known as Hill House, Magnolia Clubhouse has been promoting vocational, educational, and personal achievement since 1961. It is one of the first centers of psychosocial rehabilitation in the country and follows the International Clubhouse best practice model of community mental health care.
Magnolia Clubhouse has helped me find work. I've been working for six years now.
At Magnolia Clubhouse, members work together and in partnership with the professional mental health staff to gain confidence and create more fulfilling lives. They prepare and serve meals, work in finance and communications, produce a daily video news show, tend to the garden, make repairs around the house, run an upscale thrift store, and more. Many find employment in the community through the Clubhouse, one of the most important steps toward greater independence. The Clubhouse also helps members achieve educational goals, secure housing, and enjoy cultural and recreational resources. The Clubhouse also offers integrated psychiatric and primary medical care in its Carriage House clinic. The result? Clubhouse members have higher rates of employment with lower rates of hospitalization.
The Clubhouse is the place of belonging, friendship, and support.
Since membership is guaranteed for life, members know they have a place where they are always welcome, always belong, are always needed, and can always return. We welcome you to visit us online or in person for a tour.
Any questions or comments from council on this? There is a piece of correspondence that is asking for a support letter, so now might be time to, if you have. Culture Day?
Thanks. Just, we were wondering, are you a nonprofit society?
Well, we are now partnered with the Canadian Mental Health Association.
Thought maybe they were, yeah.
Yeah. So, now we have the ability to accept donations and hopefully get the funding happening.
Great. Great. Certainly, youth mental health has been a big area of focus for me. I chair the Victoria Family Court Youth Justice Committee, and I certainly can see that there's a definite need in the community for assistance for people with mental health, persistent and severe mental health especially, needs resourcing that's easy to find and easy to return to.
It is very easy to return to.
So, it looks like a great model.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
So, with that, we will move on to item number 6.1, which is the correspondence and letter from Mums Like Us requesting a letter of support to their endeavors, and it is included in the report that we have to supporting entities with the Sanage Police and Victoria City Council. Council's wish?
Also move that we send a letter similar in scope to what the City of Victoria Sanage Police and over this third letter is.
Second. Any further discussion, council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. Moving on to new business in planning and land use, 7.1.2, DVP permit number 15004 for 2050 Suk Road. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. Worship Hatley Memorial Gardens is requesting a relaxation of section 10, subsection B, subsection I of the signed bylaw number 60 to permit the maximum sign area of a double-sided freestanding sign to be increased from four meters to eight meter square adjacent to the entrance to Hatley Memorial Gardens on Suk Road. Mr. Bruce Simpson from Hatley Memorial Gardens informed the members that the purpose of the application is to comply with the new company standards, and that the purpose of the lighting is to raise awareness of the cemetery. And one of the challenges is, is because the plots are fairly close to the lot line, there's an easement that's needed to erect a sign. At the end of the day, the committee was actually quite happy with the look of the sign, its color, its inclusion of rock, and how it blends in with, with the natural environment. So, we were quite happy to make a recommendation to council and I so move. I'm not going to read out the whole application or the recommendation, but council's got it.
Second. Discussion? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Second item under planning and land use, 7.1.3, DVP application number 15005 for 3401 Resolution Way.
Thank you, worship. The applicant in this case is requesting a relaxation of section 5.6.06.2, subsection B of the land use bylaw to permit the setback from Veterans Memorial Parkway to be reduced from six meters to 4.56 meters in order to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling on 631, or 631 square meter lot, which fronts onto both Resolution Way and Veterans Memorial Parkway. It's kind of that odd-shaped- triangular, whatever shape it is, right at the corner there, kind of an odd, odd lot. The applicant explained that when they applied for a building permit, they were informed of the design error, which required a variance to the land use bylaw, and that he has received signatures from adjacent property owners supporting his application. It was recommended by committee and I so move that development variance permit number DVP 15-005 be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of varying a relaxation of setback adjoining Flanking Street pursuant to section 5.6.06.2, subsection B of the land use bylaw number 151, from six meters to 4.56 meters on the property described as strata law one, section 63, Squamal District, et cetera, et cetera.
Second. Discussion, council? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Transportation and public infrastructure, 7.2.1, parking concerns, fence damage along Goldstream Avenue- Goldstream Avenue adjacent to the Royal Callwood Golf Course.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Committee reviewed a report dealing with damage to the Royal Callwood Golf Course fence along Goldstream Avenue caused by vehicles backing in or nosing in to park. It was pointed out that such parking was in violation of city bylaws where parallel parking only is allowed. That might not be obvious to all of the communities, so the recommendation was that the city install parallel parking only signs along the fence. The signs be mounted on the fence if the golf course, on the fence if the golf course or where engineering and bylaw deemed necessary, mounted on posts. So we would use the fence where possible. If we needed to put posts in, we would put them in. Reason for mounting on the fence is it would save the city some money. And that bylaw enforcement officers be asked to continue enforcement of this rule as necessary. So I would move the recommendation as in your minutes.
Second. Council? Counsel Day.
Thanks. Just as well as causing damage to the fence, I believe that the cars parking all over the roots of those big fir trees is also doing damage to the root system because you compact the earth. So I think it'd be great if we could give some thought, when we can, to adding some mulch around the base of some of those trees that have been severely parked around, particularly the ones closest to Suk Road on the end near to the bus stop. And may even consider some other options further along, maybe some small amount of split rail fencing in between trees or something, just to ensure that they have good longevity because they're beautiful trees.
And I've taken particular notice on that lately and it certainly has changed the parking habits of folks because they are spaced out along there, not so jammed and crammed in. Already it's working just with the notifications. Anybody else? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Protective Services Committee? Oh, it's up to me. Actually, I think to our CAO, he's got all the notes on our meeting that we had at the RCMP detachment on May the 5th. So if you want to.
Thank you, your worship. At the meeting that was held last Tuesday, I guess it was, with the mayors and the three CAOs and the chairs of the respective protective services committees from Langford, View Royal, and Callwood. I did circulate to all members of council the letter from the OIC detachment commander, basically setting out the purpose of the meeting and the rationale for their request for additional resources. And I'll basically summarize what Callwood is being asked to do as a result of this particular meeting. After a lot of discussion, the focus came down to the RCMP would, for various reasons which they set out in their letter, would like to augment their resources. And they talk in the letter about resources for crime, major crimes, and street crimes and criminal activity. They also talk about resources for a bike patrol. But the primary focus was on the former. And essentially, they are asking for four additional uniform members and three additional civilian staff as soon as they can get them to address the various challenges that they articulated at the meeting and is in the correspondence. At the end of the, the outcome of the meeting was that really there's two requests that have been made of Callwood and View Royal. One is that we support a letter to the provincial minister, Susan Anton, essentially asking a number of things, but principally for the reinstatement of the major crime unit, as well as, and if that's not a possibility, then provincial monies to go towards additional police resources, both primarily members, but civilian, but basically additional monies because the province, the major crime unit has been disbanded. The province has passed legislation requiring municipalities to participate in regional integrated police service units. So the request to go out to the minister is that the province basically step up either by reinstating the major crime unit or by putting resources towards additional RCMP members. The, so that's issue number one that Callwood was asked to consider. And take that back to our respective councils. The second request was that we consider allocating budgetary resources this year towards assisting the RCMP in hiring one additional civilian employee. The same request was made of View Royal. And Langford has already agreed to allocate money out of their contingency fund to support the hiring of three additional RCMP members. That would be for an initial three-month period, but they did commit that this would be permanent. They've allocated, as we understand it, sufficient money out of their budget for this year to hire, to support the RCMP in hiring three additional members for a period of three months. In that intervening three months, we lobby the province, see if we can get additional partners sharing the cost. But at the end of the day, Langford is committed to allocating the necessary funding to continue on a permanent basis, that additional augmentation of three members. What they're asking of View Royal and Callwood is that we similarly find some monies in our budget this year through a source of funds as we determine to essentially pay for one additional civilian employee for a period of up to a year. And hoping that if View Royal does the same, thereby we're inching up towards the requested four-member, three-civilian wish that the RCMP want to see by going to the province. Hopefully, the province will step up. So those are the two requests. Support a letter. View Royal was to draft the proposed letter. I haven't seen it yet, but there is a meeting tomorrow, I understand, with Minister Anton at the legislature. And I think this is essentially the meeting at which the representatives will be asking for the minister's support for additional provincial monies or the reinstatement of the major crime unit. And the second thing we're being asked to consider again tonight was whether we would be supportive of allocating monies from contingency or wherever it may be in the budget to support the hiring immediately or as soon as possible of one additional civilian. And the director of finance, if there's any questions in regards to the, what the status of our contingency account is and any other potential sources of funding for that and what the annualized cost would be for a civilian member. There were lots of numbers bandied around at the meeting. Lots of them were inaccurate, but I think we have the accurate, we have the accurate number. Andrea is available for answering that question. Thank you.
I just want to be sure that we're calling the unit the right thing. It's the regional crime unit, not the major crime unit. So I think that's important, at least from my perspective. At the Family Court and Youth Justice Committee, I'm very aware of the importance of the regional aspect that that unit provided, especially where exploitation and drug issues come into effect because gangs, drugs, and prostitution don't adhere to any borders. So being able to follow the problem where whichever part of the region it hides in is very important.
I personally am rather troubled with this. We just spent three months going through the budget, including requests from the RCMP for funding. As a matter of fact, the tax rate bylaw for its final reading is on our agenda for tonight. I don't really believe that anything dramatic has changed since January when the requests were submitted and today. I would be happy to consider all of these items in the next budget year, but for now, I'm not happy with spending contingency money on extra policing. I just have one question for whoever from staff or on the protective services committee can answer. Have the RCMP ever had a full staff contingent of the monies we are already committed to spending? I don't believe in nine or 10 years on city council, I have ever seen them fully staffed. I would recommend that they fully staff what's already being funded before they come back and ask for more.
So I can't answer as to the fully funded. I think maybe one year I can recall, but I couldn't tell you off the top of my head when that was. But information that I can share with you that was shared with us at the meeting was in regards to the civilian employees, which you may recall, there was some negotiation and a change to the way their hours are done at the same time as our bylaw officers were changed. And so they're not supposed to be incurring as much overtime as they used to. And it was shared with us at the meeting that there are a number of files being put forward for charges that require the services of those civilian employees to complete before they can go forward with the charges. They have a considerable backlog. I believe the number was something like 63 files in their backlog with the, just with the existing officers that they have. And so they, there was certainly a demonstrated need for the transcription services of the municipal employee to bring about the results that we can achieve with the officers already hired.
I would like to just add a little bit to the discussion, if I may, Madam Mayor, about some of the figures. So for council's reference, I had a look at what you've just approved in the municipal RCMP side of the budget because remember you have the large RCMP federal contract, which I believe Counselor Naught was referring to, that we're not always fully staffed. And actually, I just signed off on our invoice today for January, February, March. And as you know, the federal year-end is the end of March. So I actually had the full numbers in front of me today. And they are actually at their full staff complement. It is the first time I've seen it. And on a budget of just over $2.5 million, that's the federal contract, we're just slightly a small surplus of $32,000. Now, my concern is even though there's a small surplus there, is we are definitely running over budget on the municipal side of it. I know that the inspector has had a word with our acting CAO about that. We're still continuing to run over in terms of overtime costs in spite of the fact that council did approve one additional municipal employee over a year ago. And some of that is the transcription costs. And we did also increase our budget for municipal staff from seven to eight hours a day and in an effort to cut some of the overtime costs, and that is not helping. So overall, between the federal contract and the municipal, we are running over budget right now. If council were to add a civilian member, just for your information of those who weren't at the small staff meeting we had with a couple of councillors here, with benefits, it's running us between $80,000 and $85,000 per year. That is the cost of adding a municipal employee, depending on how much overtime they're doing. So just something to keep in mind in your discussion. And if there's any other questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them, but I just wanted to give you a bit of a reference, frame of reference there.
Staying, pardon me here, an interesting conversation had at the minister's office tomorrow. And I noticed that I had a late arriving email for transit that they've moved their, they were able to move their transit time down by a bit. So there could be, likely I will be able to get to that meeting tomorrow. So it's not, won't be in conflict. So I can report back to what's kind of happening in the general sense. Counsel Logan.
Thank you, worship. Certainly, the regional crime unit has had a significant effect on the west shore. And elimination has really hurt us. Just to give you some stats, in April, Callwood alone had a 36% increase in crime, 14% increase year over year. And just one way to measure your policing strength is the police-to-population ratio. And in the past, I mean, policing strength has always been an issue on the west shore. And because the public demands a certain level of service, like a no-call-too-small level of service. And so the detachment's always historically been sensitive in looking at alternative ways to add boots to the ground. The most recent council will remember is the additions of watch clerks that did all the administrative functions, allowing the watch commanders actually to get out onto the road, adding another member, but still realizing that there's a strength issue. And certainly with what's been happening next door, that's highlighted the need for additional strength. But that need has always been there. It's just now the public is saying, hey, wait a minute here, we should be looking at bolstering that strength. So one of the reasons why the west shore hasn't come to the municipalities for a decent increase is because they're sensitive to the fact that municipal budgets are at the point of being approved and are stretched. But getting back to the measurement, Callwood has about a one-to, one-member, 2,000 population ratio. Compare that to municipal departments. Victoria is about 1 in 450. Sanich is about 1 in 700. And optimally, we should be about 1 in 800, which would actually mean that we are about 23 members short at west shore. And then also, the flip side is with the RCMP, we already receive a significant financial benefit compared to a municipal police force. We in itself save 10% right off the top in addition to receiving the numerous benefits just having the RCMP as their provider. So you know, I'm sensitive that perhaps we've been under strength for a number of years. I think if there's a need to fill, then I think we need to react for sure. And I think the province definitely needs to step up because they are a large partner with providing members from the Chosens Highlands and to First Nations. So I'm supportive of adding strength. I'm not sure about the ME side of it, but certainly the regular member side, I certainly am supportive, however we do that. But there you go. Facts.
Well, your worship, I mean, we're certainly prepared to offer a recommendation. You know, as a CAO, I'd certainly support a letter being drafted to the province and certainly work in conjunction with Langford and View Royal to the minister, asking for the reinstatement of this unit or the allocation of provincial resources to address some of these concerns we have out here. But from a staff perspective, I think it's safe to say that we have some concerns about the rationale and the timing for this. And certainly, we would not recommend an allocation. not recommend an allocation from contingency or some other source of funding at this point in time for, for this particular augmentation of resources. We think that there's an appropriate process and a timing for this. And what I would suggest you might want to consider is, is a motion that we would welcome the opportunity to, to sit in a structured process with the RCMP and other provinces, and other partners to talk about a program, an examination of their resource requirements, and work towards perhaps, over a, a period of time, to look at an augmentation of resources, but, you know, in a more staged approach, but based on good, legitimate, factual numbers and statistics. So we would certainly welcome the opportunity to sit down with the RCMP in a, in a structured process, you know, between now and next year's budget, leading up to maybe a package of recommendations that you might want to consider.
Thanks. I like the, the sound of that. One of the things that I didn't want to do is, given that the meeting with the ministry is tomorrow, you know, I was really, I would be more comfortable with making a recommendation after we hear the outcome of the meeting. So that was my only immediate, immediate point. But I'm, I'm happy to work with staff and, and look at a, a planned response. I, I know that we have issues to deal with, but I don't want to jump on the bandwagon. I think we have to make a plan.
The RCMP is a professional organization, and they have done nothing but be professional. They have done a presentation most years to council, and I think they plan ahead appropriately. They presented to us less than two months ago, saying what they needed for this next year. And I'm going to rely on their expertise, and that's what they told us. And if they want to come forward next year with an increase in staffing or something along that lines, I think that would be appropriate. I don't think we need to be knee-jerk, just like Counselor Knoll was saying. And I think this doesn't actually put them in a very good light right now, because they, they certainly should have foreseen all these situations ahead of time, especially from a staffing standpoint, if this was a true concern. So I am not going to be supportive. I'm supportive of the letter, but I'm supportive of them just following the procedure that they follow every year and bring it forward next budget.
So move that we draft a, a letter for the meeting with the minister?
I'll start as soon as our council representatives-
Thank you. I'll excuse myself due to a conflict of interest.
We have two bodies that have to leave.
For those in the audience who aren't aware, the council members that are serving as board members at the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society, through a law case that took place in 2013, have been deemed to be representing the board and not the council. So whenever the council is talking about West Shore Parks and Recreation financial issues, they have to declare a conflict and leave the meeting. So just so you understand why they've left. So annually, the West Shore Parks and Recreation has to present to the owner municipalities its new fees and charges. And in April of 2015, they submitted their new fees and charges that they've proposed that have been approved by the Board of Directors. All the council or owner municipalities have to approve the fees and charges that they've put forward by way of a bylaw. And that bylaw has been drafted and is on the agenda for later this evening, and also included with the report in the agenda package. The new fee schedule takes effect September 1st of one year and carries over to August the 31st of the following year. And West Shore undertakes a process of doing a review of other municipalities and recreation centers to make sure that the fees that they're charging are comparable. They base it on activity and usage levels and desired recovery rates, because they are trying to be self-sufficient, not depending on taxpayer dollars, but able to bring in enough revenues through charges, fees, and rentals to sustain themselves as best they can. One of the big issues I wanted to point out for this year is, in reading the staff report that was provided from West Shore, the staff put forward a proposal that the definition of senior changes from age 55 to age 60. And although it wasn't communicated to us that they agreed to do that, because that's what other municipalities are doing at their recreation centers, I did notice on page one of their fees and charges schedule that the definition of senior is 60-plus. So, well, I am 55 this year, so I have a very short period of time to go by a pass before the rates change. And then next year, I won't qualify. So, so what council has to do, of course, is the, the bylaw process. So the bylaw is in the package for first three readings. If council, in looking at the numbers, and what we did do is take their fees and charges schedule and add a column that was demonstrating the actual difference in prices, some from only 15 cents to maybe a couple of dollars or maybe $20 annually, just to let you have a better idea and understanding of what the changes in the rates are. So at this point, though, the recommendation to council, if they're okay with this, is, oops, I'm sorry, is to just receive the memo from myself, or the report from myself, to approve the fees and charges that have been approved by the board, and to forward the bylaw to council for enactment. And as I've mentioned, that's on the agenda for later this evening.
Counselor Knoll?
Just a quick question regarding the definition of seniors. I'm now officially a senior anyway, but I was wondering if that is going to change the definition of who can join the senior center at Wanda Fuka, because they're currently 55-plus? If a senior is now 60-plus, are they going to have to change their membership rules to reflect that? Anybody know?
I, I would think that the senior center is operated by like a user group entity. So their sort of constitution and bylaws would prevail for their membership. But I'm not entirely sure. Counselor Day?
I believe they're a registered society, so they have quite a whole rigmarole that I think that's better left alone. If they can draw a few young ones in, we'll have to send Pat on over. I'm not old enough yet.
Trust me, I did talk to Linda Barnes about how unhappy I was to read that. I did ask her, though, on the senior changing to 60. And it looks like the definition of senior being 60-plus, of course, is for the purpose of this bylaw. And then that would be just the annual fee or the rate that you can get for your, whatever pass it is that you're taking out under this particular bylaws.
But it also looks, if you, if you look at those numbers on there, that it used to be 20 tickets for 68, 60, and now they've moved to 25, but they've bumped up the price marginally.
They've done that for a number of them. You'll see that used to be 20, and now you have to buy a pack of 25. Yes.
In any case, folks, that's it. Before us, anybody else? Question, comments? Call the question, then. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And we might as well leave our two out of the room while we move on to item 7.4.2 memorandum. Again, Director of Administration on West Shore Parks and Rec, 2015 Annual General Meeting Member Appointment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This one is a requirement under the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society's constitution. And they have an annual general meeting every year. And there are six local government bodies that own the recreation center. And each owner is entitled to appoint one authorized representative to speak on their behalf and vote on their behalf at the annual general meeting. There's no way for the West Shore Parks and Recreation staff to know who council wants to represent them, which is why they ask us to do this by way of an appointment. It's always recommended, of course, that it not be any of the serving directors, because of this conflict of interest that's been created through that 2013 case law. So staff is recommending that council choose one of the members who are not on council to represent the city at the AGM on June the 21st at the fieldhouse at Wanda Fuka Recreation. I'm sorry, on June 11th.
I can, I mean, if, I'm likely to be there anyways, so I can voluntold myself, if you like.
I was just going to volunteer you.
Second.
Unless anyone's got burning desire. I don't see y'all jumping up and down.
Yeah, you can do that.
Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll get our two back. And we can open up regarding the memo from Mayor Young of Langford in regards to the letter to the CRD, 2015 fee requisition.
So, Madam Mayor, this may be one that's easier for you to speak to. This is the one that, the letter that Mayor Stuart Young submitted to you regarding the Westside Solutions and his proposal to the CRD Board to not have the 2015 requisition and to put the whole requisition on hold because the McLaughlin Point Sewer Treatment Plant Site wasn't successful. I'm not sure if you can add more for council on that issue.
So as, as our director has indicated, in essence, what he's suggesting is that there be no increase to, collected from our taxpayers to go towards this project when the project hasn't got legs at the moment. Again, you know, as we heard earlier around the RCMP and trying to requisition funds or change budgets, CRD has completed their budget. All their information has been put out, because they even have to be earlier in the process in order for all the municipalities to get their information. And that's all been received. We've based all of our numbers and all of our conversations around what we had at the time. So this makes it very challenging. And it's been recognized at the CRD level of the challenge that it would undertake to make any change for this year, 2015. And hopefully, we'll have this, this whole thing resolved before we get much farther into 2015. So I'm not sure, to be honest, how successful there would be in, in sending any sort of letter relative to 2015. But if I can answer anybody's questions, I'd be happy to. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I understand the difficulties with the timing of, of this request. And I also understand the, the difficulty, having worked on other sewer taxation issues here in Callwood, we really don't want to see those peaks and valleys in the requisition. It's much easier to, to have a steady amount. But what we do need to do, I think, is ensure that the money that's being put aside for sewage treatment is appropriately spent on sewage treatment down at the CRD. So do you have any concerns at the CRD that the money is being appropriately saved for the solution that we will identify in the next year?
Well, there are ongoing expenditures, because there've been commitments that have been made under this project. So those costs have to be covered off. There is ongoing discussion at the board to, you know, to minimize all of that there. And we're trying to keep a, a close watch on those things. As both West Side and East Side are working towards solutions, those are costs that are being incurred, you know, within that program. So, you know, there is expenditures. But I, you know, I, I believe that the message has been received to the CRD that we certainly do not want to be seeing, you know, any extra spending or unnecessary spending. Counselor Knoll?
Just a question, I guess, to the mayor. Should we continue with this requisition and then decide to go with a made-in-Callwood solution? Do we get the requisition back?
Under the agreement that was, that the whole program was set up into, it's all relative to funding. And we're working to preserve that, but that's part of what they're mum on if, if we were to go on our own, you know, what, what we'd actually be able to recover in the scheme of things. So it's a bit of a catch-22. Counselor Logan? Oh, follow-up? Counselor Knoll? No?
Just a question, your worship. What exactly is CETAra doing these days? Or are they helping with the East Side/West Side stuff?
No, CETAra is primarily on hold. They do have the task of the Craig Flower Pump House renewal. That one was too far in process to, you know, there was no benefit to stopping it. It needs to be in place regardless, you know, of what we do. It was an upgrade that was, so they're very limitedly working.
So do we have to buy them a deck of cards or something to, once that pump station's constructed? Yeah?
Yeah. Counselor Knoll?
Yes, given that I'm not really reassured by what's going to happen to the money that taxpayers of Callwood dump into this project, for the sake of argument, I would like to move that council directs staff to prepare a letter to the CRD Board, similar in nature, supporting the City of Langford's requests.
Second or?
Sure, second.
Discussion, conversation? Counselor Day?
I just, I, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of being, what do they say, penny wise and, and pound foolish, just because in thinking of, of the staff time that's involved in sending a letter and evaluating that letter, and trying to figure out how to respond to us from the CRD, I mean, the CRD staff is our staff. We're paying for them, at least, more, more or less. And I don't, I, I just think that it's unlikely to create a result that's going to be a whole lot better for the citizens of Callwood.
Any others? Counselor John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so just clarification on what just happened. So if we write this letter, we are supporting that we're eliminating this year's requisition?
The, the request that has been made by Langford is that the CRD not collect from us. But they've already issued the bill, so to speak.
Okay. And so my follow-up question is, if we, if the CRD doesn't collect from us this year, will they not slow down the funding for a project later when we do decide, when we pick a, a site?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I will not be supporting the letter then.
Staff?
Yes, if I could, again, just give you a bit of information on which perhaps to inform your decision. So we have given first, second, and third reading to the tax rates. You're looking at adopting them this evening. And if you were to follow Mayor Young's line of thinking, we would have to revise the tax rates, because the tax rates do include this requisition amount. And we're already up against a deadline here of May 15th to pass the tax rates. The amount of money that we're talking about for Callwood is not the same percentage increase as for Langford. In 2014, we were asked to requisition $568,000 towards sewer treatment, wastewater treatment. This year, yes, there is an increase. It is 28% in our case. It's $728,000. And if I understand correctly, what council is looking at is to continue to collect last year's amount of 568, but to not collect the additional increase, which amounts to about $160,000. Not a lot of money, in terms of it affecting our, us setting our tax rates for the year. I do have some concerns about the timing. Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Could I just maybe, perhaps, looking at Counselor Knoll, maybe make a friendly amendment to just say for the 2016 tax year versus this year, since we're already into it? If the project isn't moving forward, that they shouldn't be putting the requisition for sewers for next year?
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
And that was the second or so. All of council accepting of the amendment? Yes.
Yes, call the question? Yep, okay. So, we are on the amended motion, then?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Are you basically in the motion, asking that we not collect the requisition at all, or just the increase in the previous year requisition? Because Mayor Young's letter talks about putting on hold the increase, if I'm correct. I just wanted to be clear for the record.
I believe my intent was the entire requisition. If it's dated to 2016, if they haven't made substantive moves on this sewage treatment plant, it seems to have been stuck in the works for years and years and years now, and we're just spinning our wheels. I think it's time to stop pumping money into the CRD, and move on with a Callwood-only solution, if they can't get their ducks in a row. So, it would be the entire requisition for 2016.
Counselor Day?
So, I'll just weigh in and say that I don't think there's much chance that they're not going to get our ducks in a row at the CRD, because we're being mandated to have our ducks in a row. What we're quibbling about right now is, is how to sustainably get our ducks in a row, I guess. And, where was I going with this? Just that, I think it's, it's important to remember that we're trying to stick with a regional plan, and, in my opinion, if at all possible, do that through Callwood's sustainable vision, possibly in Callwood, with a distributed system that could be located in Callwood, we don't know. But we want to stay within that plan for two reasons: a federal grant and a provincial grant. So, if we go, oh, you guys just can't get your stuff together, so let's have Callwood figure out the solution on our own, we are a hundred percent on the hook for those costs with Callwood taxpayers only, and/or anybody else that we can lure into the system that we create. So, there is a lot to be said, two-thirds funding, for staying in a system with everybody else, and trying to influence that system to be the best possible one, and service more of the region, if not all of the region.
Anybody else?
Call the question on the motion, then, that we send a letter to the CRD expressing our request for the funding change for 2016. All those in favor? Opposed? Three. All right, we're gonna have to do this again. All of those in favor? Three, and, one, two, three, four of us opposed. Motion fails. Pardon me.
Guys against girls, that's where this is gonna go, huh? Fine, I knew there would be a problem, this council.
Moving on to section number eight bylaws, folks. One five seven two, final reading for Callwood Sewer Utility Bylaw, number one five zero zero, 2011, amendment number three, bylaw number one five seven two, 2015.
Move final?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Eight point two, bylaw number one five seven one, final reading again for our tax rate bylaw, number one five seven one.
Take it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number one five six seven, final reading, Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Establishment and Loan Authorization Bylaw, number six nine eight, 2011.
Move second?
It's final.
Oh, second, second, final. That's what I meant. I know.
Then I'll move it.
One five six seven.
God, how can you tell it's getting late?
Eight point three.
I have to change the paper and logs.
Okay. It was LAS enlargement for Seven-Eleven Demel Place.
Okay.
You're good?
Yeah.
Does that help you out?
Yeah.
We have a mover and a shaker?
We do.
Yes, you've got that?
Absolutely.
Good. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final reading for one five six eight, Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization Bylaw, enlargement, Seven-Eleven Demel?
Take it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Eight point five, bylaw number one five two zero, final reading, Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw, Establishment and Loan Authorization Bylaw, number five nine eight, two thousand and one, for thirty-three sixty, Wishart Road.
Move final?
Take it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final reading for Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization, six two five, two thousand and one, again, thirty-three sixty, Wishart Road.
Take it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And finally, we have first, second, and third readings on Westshore Parks and Rec...
I'm leaving. I don't want to do this.
Depart, two people. No, we have an in-camera, we need to resume in camera.
Come on!
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second?
Second, second.
Any further conversation, comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Third.
Second?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Motion move in camera?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Thank you to the last two folks.